About what happened and how she felt. I haven't been able to connect with her since. But, you know, so that I wanted to clarify that. I guess I wanted to share my overall thoughts. I've been hard pressed to come up with a set of questions that I think gets at like the, I think, my fundamental disconnect between the moment in time that we are experiencing right now and the issue with community and this community feeling like the, what the appropriate role of our police and what policing is in our community. And I think it's ironic that this was a vigil and a protest protesting that, and it ended with this aggression, right? And I'm fundamentally concerned and struggling with that fact, right? I don't inherently believe that there was one police officer that, you know, like, I guess I'm trying to move it away from one particular officer and thinking of the overall system and response, right? Why was an overwhelmingly peaceful demonstration, why did that still end with how it ended, right? Like, the people are traumatized now as a result of what happened. And again, like, I respect the chief for owning, you know, where she could have done better. I am just still not okay. I'm struggling to piece out the policy and the procedure that ultimately led to this happening, right? I was there. I too was in the front line of that area. When orders were issued to disperse, I complied. I actually left because I thought everything would resolve peacefully, right? That I felt, I don't know, the violinists were starting to come in. And how could an event possibly where people are literally playing the violin to honor somebody who passed away end in that way? And I came back because of concerns for what I was hearing and seeing of how people were, of the scenario that was unfolding, right? And just the message that that sends to the community that is in the middle of processing and heightening their awareness around Elijah McLean specifically. But in this larger movement of believing black lives and black people when they say they're being overpoliced, I just, I'm fundamentally struggling to be okay with how this unfolded, whether it was, you know, some mistakes happening, as well as like, just the larger, like, what are we willing to tolerate as a response in community? I am an average, everyday person. I don't have, and I think this is a good thing, I don't have a military background. And so I'm not normalized to what that looks like. And I'm giving you a very, just from like, an honest perspective of how things unfolded, like, that shouldn't be okay. So, you know, I think we have a lot more work to do and a lot more communication. And for what it's worth, you know, chief, I do appreciate you keeping, you know, communication open during the event, owning some of the areas in which you could make improvements. But that doesn't negate, I think, the larger picture of what unfolded, the reason why they were there, and the irony behind how it ended.
Further questions, comments? Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you so much. So, I do have a follow-up to the media question. Again, I want to point out that the journalist in question was very clearly wearing a camera and OC spray doesn't contain itself. So, why would someone spray journalists?
So, sir, again, I have talked about if the journalist is getting into proximity where people are grabbing batons, throwing things in the proximity where that OC spray is being sprayed. I've already apologized that that happened and that it was not intentional. If you, if that individual himself would like to call me and have a discussion, I'd be more than happy to talk to them about that specific, if they're feeling that they were targeted because they were the media, that is alarming. I would love to, I believe that is not the case. But again, incidental spraying after dispersal orders, if you stay in that area, your chances of getting cross-contaminated are high. And it's very unfortunate, sir. And that's my answer to that question.
All right. So, I also witnessed APD threatened to use an LRAD, a long-range device, at least twice before the vigil was interrupted. Again, what is the risk to bystanders, especially, again, we had elderly and children in the area? And it was also follow-up with, it was never actually used, to my knowledge, so why even threaten? Do you think that's a good way to de-escalate?
So, sir, I can answer that. We did have a machine, it is called an LRAD. It was brought to the vigil by the Adams County Sheriff's Office. It's actually a really great tool. That is what we were making all the announcements on. It's a portable machine that I was able and others were able to carry around with us. It does have a feature, it's not just a megaphone. In the LRAD, it actually can produce a very high-level sound that is actually under state statute considered a use of force. We never use that. And quite frankly, one of the times we turned it on, it said, this is a test of the LRAD system, and that might have been what you heard. There was never a warning such as it's about to be used. That was clearly probably user error because we were unfamiliar with the system. But it was much better than the megaphone that we had. And so, when Adams County said, hey, would you like to use our machine? We gladly did that because it was very loud, and we wanted those orders to be clearly heard.
Thank you. And I do have one more question, just about the general plan and the deviations. I know you touched on this a little bit, chief, but I remember you saying when we were talking that you would consider even, depending on the situation, letting, going as far as letting a tree burn or something like that, if it would keep things from getting out of control. And when I rolled up at 1:30, I saw folks in turtle gear out there already. So, maybe that was hyperbole on your part, but I just need to know, I don't think, you know, do you really think that that was the best thing to do, starting the day off with the turtle gear? Because I really feel like that set a mood for the rest of the day and allowed agitators to get as far as they did.
So, sir, no, it was not hyperbole. And that's not fair. But I will tell you that the turtle gear that you keep referring to is the protective gear. Those officers were out of sight until the fence was being shaken and threatening to drop. And so, I had to bring them out. And they had to be ready at a moment's notice, sir, to respond. And if you've seen that, you know it's going to take a minute to get put on. And so, yes, they had to wear that throughout the day in the event that they were called upon. And that's my answer.
Thank you.
I have just slight clarifications, mayor. Can I ask a couple? You're muted. I'm gonna...
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Councilmember.
So, I heard from Denver on the point of items being used that the department doesn't use or has stated they haven't used, that when they called in other agencies, some of those other agencies may have had items that our agency doesn't have. Is that a possibility or something that may have occurred in this situation?
I'm looking at both my sergeant and commander, and they, go ahead and answer.
None of our partner agencies deployed any less lethal weapon systems that were not consistent with what we deploy. So, the only systems that were deployed out there were consistent with what we have, no pepper balls, nothing like that.
Okay. And then, I just also want to clarify, with that audio system, whatever it was, it did come off as though it was about to be deployed. I was standing fairly far back from the fence, and I heard it. And I started running and covering my ears, and I witnessed a lot of other people doing that as well, because it did sound like it was an indication that that was going to be deployed. So, I'm making sure that we address that for the future would be good.
Sure. We apologize for that, and we will figure out a different system, especially if it has an automatic test module that they, he clearly said he wasn't familiar with the system. It was loaned to us from Adams County, and perhaps, you know, that's another learning lesson. And moving forward, we will ensure that we have other options. Man, thank you.
Last comment or question?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hoover.
So, I just want to say, this is a very sad situation. On one hand, there is an incredibly powerful memorial and vigil for Elijah McLean, and I salute everybody who came to do that. But on the other hand, as we've heard in great detail, there were people who came with the sole purpose to attack the police, damage property, and cause a riot. I apologize to the residents and the guests of Aurora who were caught between the police and were trying to protect them, and the riot, you know, and they were between these people and the rioters. I've heard the comments, we've received the emails, and I hear how upset the people are. But on the other hand, the chief explained that the attack was imminent, and that our police force prevented that attack. I suspect we'll have more peaceful protests in Aurora, and I just say that we welcome.
Okay. This is Mayor Mike Hoffman. I want to thank everybody for participating tonight, our residents for tuning in, listening. I want to thank members, our council members for their questions. And I want to thank the interim police chief, Vanessa Wilson, for her presentation, I think, which has led us to a better understanding of what happened and why. And I want to thank her for honesty and admitting that mistakes were made, and that we can learn from those mistakes going forward. With a clerk up now, please resume. Public invited to be heard.
And mayor, yes, I just wanted to mention, we have 39 comments. I read 63 earlier. I'm happy to read the 39. Just a question, is it okay with the council if we read the 39 that have come in? They've kind of stopped coming in. And then, any other ones that come in thereafter, we can post or put online? Is that okay? I just want to make sure.
Is there any objection? I'm saying none, that's what we will do.
Okay, mayor, I will read the 39 comments I have, and we'll go from there. So, let's see. The first one is from Ben Karp. The Denver Post states that 90 fire departments and emergency medical service agencies across Colorado, including those in Aurora, Denver, and Colorado Springs, have waivers from the Colorado Department of Health and Environment to use ketamine to treat excited delirium, according to data from the department. Excited delirium was the diagnosis made by law enforcement to justify sedating Elijah McLean with ketamine. That is extremely problematic. The American Medical Association, American Psychiatric Association, nor world health organizations recognize it as a legitimate medical issue. Vincent DiMaio, a retired forensic pathologist and co-authors of Excited Delirium Syndrome: Cause of Death and Presentation, claims such a diagnosis only occurs when the autopsy fails to reveal evidence of sufficient trauma or natural disease to explain the death. In other words, medical examiners tend to look to excited delirium as an option when they are otherwise stumped. But this issue goes beyond medical ethics. The LA Times reports that, by some estimates, excited delirium is now being ruled as the reason behind the majority of all in custody deaths. Outlets such as Slate, Mother Jones, and Marshall Project have suggested an excited delirium diagnosis is used as a scapegoat for law enforcement accountability over avoidable deaths largely by TASER. The NAACP claims this practice is disproportionately used against minorities. The second, the supposed symptoms of excited delirium all sound like reasonable reactions to the use of force by police. Even if the disorder were legitimate, there should be some reason to suggest that it's what the detainee is experiencing. So, finally, my question, how can we empower officers without a college degree to diagnose someone simply from walking on a street, let alone for a disorder that doesn't even exist? Next comments from Ray Padilla. I would like to thank the men and women of the Aurora Police Department for taking a stand and not allowing a group of thugs to destroy our city buildings like what occurred in Denver and across the nation. The police were there for everyone's safety and the prevention of property damage. Rather than taking media accounts and personal video evidence into account only, I suggest that you wait for body worn camera footage as to why officers responded the manner they did. Thank you to everyone that day who peacefully protested, and I'm sorry, a group of low-life thugs took that away from you. I fully support the Aurora Police Department and the actions that they were forced to take on June 27, 2020, at Aurora City Hall and the Police Department. Proud South Aurora resident Ray. This one's from Haven Hemminghopper. My name is Haven Hemminghopper. I'm an Aurora citizen, and I'm disgusted by the acts of our police department. Defund the police and put this money towards better areas such as education, mental health, and poverty. To not hear public comments in general is ridiculous, and that council member, as that council member recommended, in a person session would have people present and speaking. You represent us. This one's from Craig Svankin. The Aurora City Council has blood on its hands, and Aurora Police Department has lied under oath. The police chief lied about threats to the city of Aurora. You need to fire the police chief and investigate the police. If nothing, Aurora will become famous for racist, violent, thugish police. This one's from Rebecca Moser. It's not too late to do the right thing. I am disgusted after watching footage from the last protest in Aurora. I watched APD brutally beat people innocently and peacefully protesting. There is no excuse for the amount of force displayed. Our police, in full riot gear, this afraid of unarmed citizens? N paid administrative lead during the investigation emphasized conflict, de-escalation with the police force. Next one's from Nicholas Beltolt. I don't think the police have responded appropriately to Elijah's family's calls for justice, nor has anyone properly responded to the protesters' demands. The murderous cops need to step down or be removed. I don't want them protecting me and my family and friends. We need a complete overhaul of the justice system that starts with getting rid of our police force and their budget. This one's from Shannon Brubacher. I would like, well, yeah, apologize. I'm writing to support APD. I watched the videos provided by the media throughout the protest. I watched the crowd as the crowd tore down the fencing. I removed safety equipment from the windows, gathered weapons. I watched and wondered why the police were allowed this behavior to continue. I watched aerial footage that showed the violin vigil being protected by APD officers. I saw APD officers back to the violin vigil. This tells me they were protecting them from the other agitated rioters, which included Coombs. I support the APD and the action they took on Saturday. No officer should be forced to tolerate any form of violence just because it would make the community upset. If protesters would grow up and act like adults, they could stay calm. The training that the emergency response team receives is above standard. They are very well versed in how to maintain order. There are rules in place. These rules are there for reason. You do this, this happens. You don't do this, this does not matter. The process removes any dated approach because of who something is. I felt that they maintained their composure. They used the least amount of force possible to move the agitators away from the peaceful protest. Why riot gear? Because people throw items and attack them. Coombs needs to resign. Her vile social media posts are disgusting. Let me recap. Her F pride, it's Wrath Month, no cops, no KKK, no racist USA, all lives don't matter until black lives matter. We're here, we're queer, and we're effing angry at our black siblings. You are disgusting, you spew hate, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you want the police to be held to a higher standard, perhaps you should start acting like an adult and hold yourself to a higher standard. It's pretty clear you hate police. I just hope we can make it through your term in one piece before you begin destroying the city. Chief, thank you for your support and honesty while dealing with the backlash of what started as public misconduct. Thank you for taking a stand. Next one's from Addie Himley. I was present at the peaceful protest on Saturday. Not only can I say that I'm beyond disgusted by the actions of the APD, but I am traumatized. As I sat on the grass eating vegetables donated by fellow protesters, I saw what looked like hundreds of militarized officers come out of the building. As they walked out, they already had in their rubber bullet guns drawn, their pepper spray canister raised. My heart dropped, and I broke a sweat, a natural reaction to seeing a loaded gun pointing your direction. Moments later, I saw a cloud of tear grass blowing out of the area that moments before was packed with hundreds of peaceful protesters. Having brought tear grass solution, I ran in that direction with the goal to help those who had been hurt. I couldn't make it that far. The line of fully armed cops stopped me and others, the protesters, and I linked elbows to create a barrier between the violent police and those most vulnerable behind us. Not a hand was laid on an officer, and it was impossible with our linked arms. I made eye contact with the officer in front of me. He lunged at me over and over, attempting to brutally stab me with his baton. I dodged just in time, tens of times. As the police pushed us into a line of trees, I stumbled, and the officer stabbed me in the stomach with his baton. Instinctively, I tried to move the baton with my arm. When I looked up, I saw pepper spray being sprayed directly into my eyes from an inch away. For five minutes, this officer made eye contact with me, a 22-year-old woman who's 5'3" and weighs 130 pounds while trying to stab me with the strength he had. When I was sprayed, he wasn't spraying the crowd. He sprayed me to deliberately hurt me. As soon as I was sprayed, I lost my eyes out. I tried to run away because, but because I couldn't breathe or see, I fell into asphalt and streamed. I was helped by volunteer medics. I couldn't see for 15 minutes. I laid on the ground in my own tears, blind, helpless, screaming, and terrified for 15 minutes. The only sounds I heard were the screams of the people being brutalized, underscored by the violinist playing Pachelbel's Canon, who despite the violence, never stopped playing. I was forced to move multiple times because regardless, the cops were still moving forward. I can see now, but to this day, my skin still burns. I've had nightmares of this night for the past, for the past night since Saturday. I will never forgive the APD for this. I was born and raised in this city, and I've been betrayed. I am lucky. What I went through is nothing compared to what Elijah experienced and to what the McLean family is going through right now. Shame on the APD. Shame on Mike Hoffman. Defund this terrorist organization. You have the audacity to call public service. Next one is from Michael F. It's, I'll just go and read it. It says, thanks to me, weekend and week out, you have to read both negative and positive questions from citizens of Aurora and other surrounding cities. Due to COVID-19, the way council meetings would normally be handled obviously has been interrupted. So, on behalf of the citizens of Aurora, we just want to say thanks. Sometimes you have to call a council member or the mayor a few choice words from citizens of Aurora who are pissed about a topic. Thanks. Next one's from Mustafa Abdullah. Hi there. I'm an Aurora resident and went to join the peaceful protest on June 27 at APD headquarters for Elijah McLean, who was murdered by APD. Later on, I found on several media posts that the way AP treated the peaceful protesters was unexpected. They acted like they came from a different area and started gassing and pushing peaceful protesters without any provocation. I went there to join the rally for Elijah, who was murdered by three murderers. If you watch the minute-to-minute video surfaced, how they murdered this innocent kid, and I'm kind of sweating to watch that, these monsters even threatened him to bring a dog and bite him while he was vomiting. How cruel these monsters are. He was crying and sobbing and begging for his life. What a beautiful, innocent soul had to give the ultimate price. I'm really, really heartbreaking, and face, his face keeps appearing to me at all times. Last week, when I wake up in the morning, first thing I remember is his face and his last words. Don't know why it's bugging me so much. Maybe he was one of the innocent best kids in the world, but the world treated him cruelly. He didn't get anything from this world. Until these murderers are brought to justice, it's difficult to sleep at night. How in the world these murderers are walking free? An innocent man was returning home, buying tea, and after Aurora Police stopped him for interrogations, and after a few minutes, he was pulseless, and who is going to take the responsibility of his death. This is simply murder. It's really hard to watch the video. Need serious reform in APD and extensive training and disciplinary actions against those committed crimes who committed crimes against the general citizen and used excessive force. I believe those ill-trained officers didn't handle the situation right. They should have let him go home where his mother was waiting, as far as they don't have any credible information to use chokehold techniques against this innocent man. There was no warrant or any prior conviction about this man due to APD used excessive and unnecessary force, and that caused this young man to die. Next one is from someone named New Amsterdam. I wish to remain anonymous. I attended the protest and was standing towards the front near the police. We were peacefully protesting, and the police were instigating the whole time. There were no instigators. There was no violence on the protesters' part. Nobody threw rocks, stopped lying. Officers were pointing at us, aiming at us with their guns, and acting as if they were going to charge. People ran when this happened, causing casts and injuring children and people in wheelchairs. They were armed gunmen on top of the library, as well as the adjacent buildings, pointing military-looking weapons at us. The police announced their intention of throwing chemicals at us, and then marched forward, striking people with batons and shooting rubber bullets at stragglers. Schools are out, and many school-aged children were in the crowd. There were babies at the protest. Some people had asthma, and the chemicals deployed were causing breathing problems, and they were not able to run. This behavior is not acceptable in my town. Stop brutalizing the people. Stop trying to make it acceptable for people to die in police custody. Thus, this behavior disgusts me. I urge you to hold those in charge responsible. I urge you to take many actions that cause shift in our policing system. Next one's from Douglas Esposito. Two MA concern, you have a real problem with your police. Whatever motivated them to attack peaceful protesters is not enough. I've heard their side of the story, and they are full of crap. This time, they've gone too far. I expect them to lose their jobs, and particularly those who gave the orders. I will be writing my congressman to have the FBI investigate this for civil rights violations and members of the police force who have a history of extreme behavior. This one's from Ashley Cancel. Why not, instead of going against the community, have you not stepped up and acknowledged your mistake and had put on tribute for Elijah yourself? This one is from Meredith Phillips. Mary, members of the council, I'm a resident of Ward Five and was appalled at the actions of the police, of the Aurora Police Department this weekend. I have a suggestion for what we do with the APD budget once you finally accept the will of the people and defund this gang of thugs. Our city clerk, Stephen Rager, could use an assistant and some counseling to help process the disrespect shown by certain members of the council. You know who you are. The toll this meeting alone must be taking on him is enormous, and he deserves lifetime mental health coverage and his pick of emotional support animal, all to be taken directly out of the APD budget. Supporting a genuine public health servant is much better use of your city funds. This one's from Yu Sfar. The reasons detailed for dispersal are not valid. Are you really telling me that Aurora cops are afraid of the dark? Do Aurora police not know what transpired in Denver, where police for peaceful protesters, including myself, were met with tear gas and flashbangs? If there are police officers on your force that are afraid of water, the dark, or people wearing goggles, then fire them before they murder someone. This one's from Samantha Burton. To the APD, your institution's foundation is built on the perpetual perpetuation of slavery and racism. It is rotten to its core. You're bashing, you're basing for your violent approach to this peaceful protest on a meme? Seriously, do you know what Antifa stands for? Anti-fascist. It's not an organization, it's an ideology. The same ideology fought the Nazis. I was at the protest. I guarantee these accounts are not unfounded. The posturing of the police, the law enforcement on the roofs around us may clear that our First Amendment right was being protected but threatened. We have to ask why we continue to prioritize unfounded concerns about property before people, why we treat individuals different under the law, why are armed individuals protesting public health orders respected while individuals seeking the end of systemic oppression attacked? The police don't protect the people. They protect systems of disempowerment and disenfranchised. History has always framed any demand for human rights as radical. It bucks against those in power. Those who the police truly protect, we the people protect each other. Black, brown, and indigenous lives matter. There is no such thing as blue life. You choose your job, you put on your uniform, playing the victim doesn't serve anyone. If my coworkers were perpetuating one-tenth of the brutality of the APD, you better believe I'd quit yesterday. The amount of restraint shown by people of color in the face of years of oppression, disrespect, torture, and murder is unbelievable. If that was my child, the city would be in flames. This one's from Caitlin Gabrielle Flauta. I'm hearing them talk about how concerned of police safety they are, but apparently citizens aren't allowed to arm themselves to possible attacks from untrustworthy police and are suddenly looking to incite something. Are they really that blind to the huge imbalance of power and authority they have? It's like responding to a puppy biting you by kicking it. Sorry for the horrible image, but I cannot believe what I'm hearing. This is from Michael Dear, Aurora City Council members. It was noted that rocks were thrown at the officers when the order was given to disperse the field. Is there footage of any rocks being thrown out? How many people threw rocks? Was the threat large enough for your officers felt they need sufficient display of force, and that the field needed to be cleared? The following slide was displayed, that was displayed is unacceptable. Can you identify in video individuals with armed handguns, assault rifles? Many protesters were wearing makeshift armor in response to a cry from many of the medics right after finishing the student march, assisting the event that the police are getting more agitated and were concerned for the young students there. Can we get some more bodies on the line? I, among others, went to the crowd in front of the APD entrance and donned my bicycle helmet and protective goggles. I have seen countless reports across the country of police abusing civilians and was worried that the police were going to do what the police were going to do. The best decision that was made all day was when the officers pushed their lines back and attempted to de-escalate. Under Aurora, there is a contemplation of numerous events from June 30. There's a link, we will send this comment out. During the entire event, I never saw anybody gathering rocks, passing out rocks, or gathering other types of weapons. Protesters donned makeshift armors in response to the police donning their armored gas masks and other gas gears. Protesters typically bringing umbrellas not to conceal weapons, but to protect ourselves from officers spraying pepper spray. I'm willing to testify to any and all my accounts of the events that happened. Next one's from Lindy Vickers. Of course, the protesters were in protective gear. Have you been tuning into the effing news the past month? Perhaps they were trying to protect themselves from the projectiles the PD keeps shooting at them. The presentation is laughable. Chief started out great. This is effing clown, this effing clown is ruining it all. This one's from Haven Hemminghopper. As a peaceful protester myself, I bring protective gear because of instances of police using tear gas. tear gas unprovoked. Goggles are used to protect my eyes and should not be indicative of unpeaceful protesting. See. Next one's from Eileen Keter. Are you aware that every time one of those Antifa protesters is white and did not fit in with the mostly young unarmed crowds? This is obviously an effort of the right-wing groups to make the protesters look violent. It's clear with guns and military clothing that these are violent right-wingers. Next one's from Michael F. Chief, thank you for explaining what you and your team observed and for protecting the people's building. As you said, first and foremost, cops are family men and women, fathers and mothers and part of the community. Their jobs are to protect and serve. When you say they're your officers, you're 100% correct. As chief, even though you're interim chief, your job is to protect your officers. Make sure they go home each and every night. I'm proud of you and stand with you. The city council members need to understand what it means to be a cop. They take their lives into their hands each day. Some of the council members can learn from the men and women in blue. Stop beating on your cops, on your own cops and know they're on your side. This one's from Elliot. I'm watching the Aurora PD's justification for their attack on the Elijah vigil and my draw is hitting, I think it's supposed to be jaw is hitting the floor. Here are the most, here are the most of their justifications. They had intelligence, Antifa was coming. They saw an Antifa flag. Some people in the middle of a pandemic had face shields on and masks. One guy had a shield to protect himself against officer batons. Night was coming and night brings Antifa. They found maybe before and maybe after their attack on the vigil, a pile of rocks that may, that might have been placed earlier by their own administration, by a construction crew. Are these guys this shameless that they expect the public to buy this crap? This one's from Kelsey Tomassen. Those videos are very anticlimactic. You should see the ones Elijah, of Elijah being murdered. And remember, that's what's playing in people's minds as they stand in front of your force. The violence wasn't right in regard to both sides. A few bad apple protesters made you want to shut the whole thing down. Imagine how we feel. This is from M. Burgland, Missy Burgland. I'm watching your presentation and I take issue with several parts of your presentation. To begin with, why was it never mentioned in your presentation that the leaders of the student march were threatened prior to their event with liability for the actions of all? Calling your youth leaders' parents and threatening them is bullying. Who was calling them and on what authority were these threats made? Regarding the images and statements made during the presentation, your department is surprised people weren't a mask and goggles. I'm a four-year-old mother of three children and my fourteen-year-old daughter asked to bring swim goggles because of the things she had seen online about the protest. This is not indicative of everyone who came being prepared, came prepared being violent. If you were concerned about a small group of people, deal with that group of people. When I throw a birthday party, if some of the kids are misbehaving, I deal with them. I don't end the entire party and threaten and engage violently with everyone. I expect greater discretion from a world-class police agency. Additionally, stating that the rocks were so threatening, your own presentation states that the rocks may have been put there by construction crews. If so, why blame and disrupt the entire gathering? You have a few videos of water bottles hitting someone. You use chemical agents against your citizens. You have one person grabbing a baton. I watched several officers hit people with batons and was personally threatened. I'm five foot two. The officer threatening me, Officer Blue, had at least 150 pounds and eight inches on me. If there was a small group of agitators, deal with them. Don't traumatize the rest of us. I've had nightmares since the event. All we were doing was watching someone play violin. We were nowhere near any agitators the entire night and still faced aggression from your officers. Your defense is weak. All of us there, were there because you still have yet to address the murder committed by officers employed by your department. This department is failing to take accountability for Elijah's murder and the brutality we faced. You are human beings armed with weapons, body armor, and power. We were just listening to violins. Who protects us when you don't? Next one's from John Perkins. According to the Scientific American and the Center for Disease Control, pepper spray is a type of tear gas. Helmet shields, goggles, and gas masks are methods of protecting oneself from the deployment of chemical weapons. Do you believe I should feel safe going to protest in Aurora? Do you feel, believe protesters have the right to arm themselves in self-defense? Should people feel concerned about affiliating with groups because of how they broadly labeled their political orientation? How do you feel, how do you think you should be held accountable for your failure to communicate with the protesters? When will the body cam footage be available to the public? How do you believe you should be held accountable for your failure to fulfill your intent of keeping the violin vigil peaceful? Next one is from, from Michael. You spoke of the safety of the crowd and the safety of property. Property was not damaged. In addition, the crowd was injured by the officers. The woman yelling, "No, no, no," was yelling because the intent was clear. The police wanted to disperse the crowd and were willing to do so by any means necessary. The reaction of the officers was due to your officers not knowing how to appropriately deescalate your knee-jerk reaction to resort to violence whenever possible. A willingness of escalation of violence does not mean the officer should also be willing to escalate to violence. The fact that you had three officers go to the hospital because of dehydration shows poor planning on your part has absolutely nothing to do with the protesters. The fact that your officers are subject to the same stressors details a key difference between the officers and the citizens. The officers have had a lengthy training in order to deal with these situations. I'm deeply appalled by the entire situation and the officer's response. Some officers were injured, but in the interest of protecting the public, many members of the public were injured. The APD had no reason to respond to protesters with a militaristic police response and their response only further tension with protesters. Let's see. The communication needs to be better. The communication with protesters was non-existent aside from yelling, move back, and attacking with batons and pepper spray. Another item of interest is how several of the police officers had no badge numbers and were not willing to provide their names nor their badge numbers. There's another one from Caitlin Gabrielle Flata. If they thought there was going to be a fire, why did they, why didn't they call the fire department? This one's from Spencer H. The presentation is proof that we need to defund the police. We have four white officers, three men and one woman, simply because the police chief stepped down as the previous white police chief. During the presentation, the acting police chief completely skipped over the part where the use of force and where they authorized it. This is how white supremacy organizations stay in power by loosely using an excuse without having evidence, but state it as facts. There's no videos of them gassing crowds, which the world, world saw unedited footage and none of the Aurora, excuse me, none of the Aurora PD statements have any supporting evidence such as orders being stated bilingually, the threats they saw, the heavy backpacks being carried around, which could be people tired after walking for hours. There is no evidence that people were coming across a big field to start problems. The only evidence is their feelings, which were stated multiple times, inciting violence to squash perceived threat. This is the same ignorance excuses which used, which was used to murder Elijah and cover up the, in the similar ways as those videos had problems. They're highlighting the same people multiple times as evidence of a few people wearing protective gear and flags. These are not threats. These are not direct threats. These are excuses and no point, at no point is there direct evidence of a direct threat and there are no stories, not proof, which is hearsay. If the officers had body cams, it would be a problem that are evidence. The evidence is not conclusive of a threat, a perceived threat or anything not peaceful. There is no proof of their excuses, simply re-highlighting people protecting themselves while being met toe-to-toe with heavily armed Aurora PD. The KKK uses the same excuses and supporting evidence when lynching people of color. They have proven time and time again that they are interested in covering themselves, beginning the protest while they're in riot gear before the protest started. Pull the internal, pull the internal building footage to prove this, as they were walking around at 1:00 PM in riot gear, prepared for violent, during violence during peaceful protests. The three-foot fence being knocked down is not a threat as the crowd was not advancing. Being struck with one water bottle is not a threat. A crowd being shoved out of the way, then being blamed for trying to steal a police weapon is not a threat. These videos are all from the police perspective, not the crowd's perspective. None of these uses of force are de-escalating techniques and escalated the situation. This is propaganda to prove their point while ignoring the failures to skate around the real issues. This is how white supremacists and terrorist groups operate, which is how the Aurora PD is operating. And I will have to stop there for time constraints. Next one is from Haven Hemminghoffer. Thank you, Councilor Creams, for clarifying that the protest medics do not mean a non-peaceful protest. As a peaceful protester who came as a protest medic, I was preparing myself in case things escalated, much as the police do. A recent history has shown things can escalate quickly and I come to be peaceful. This one's from Jason Dillon. Judging from the police leadership presentation, they were collecting information throughout the afternoon about isolated individuals and behaviors they perceived as proprietary for a violent assault against the building and/or officers. Why did they not address these individuals as the suspicious behaviors were observed in an effort to neutralize the threat before dark was approaching? Certainly, these individuals could be detained for questioning, especially those lurking behind trees, removing projectiles from their packs. This one's from Mason Heinrich. Thank you for taking my comment. Why is it so hard for cops to de-escalate? I too was at the protest on 6/28 and saw nothing but agitation from the Aurora Police Department. You've failed us, Wilson. As part of this community, I am ashamed. Fund education and social programs. Let the cops fund their payrolls and resources by having a book sale or making lemonade stand, but please ensure you have a permit. Next one is from Linda Montgomery. To the Aurora, the news reports of your police pepper spraying people holding a peaceful musical vigil for the ridiculous reason that they thought violin bows were weapons was a despicable act of violence against people mourning for Elijah, a peaceful introvert who was killed walking home while black. The officers who used the pepper spray should be disciplined or fired for using excessive force against a legal vigil. I'm a white woman who has been looking forward to exploring Colorado with my white husband and unless your city completely restrains the police force and eliminates this attitude or the officers with it, we will boycott your city and spend our tourist dollars somewhere else. I am very active on social media and will actively spread the word about whatever Aurora does or does not do to remedy the racist, violent attitudes of your police officers. Enough is enough. The tide has turned and if you want to survive politically, you had better change with it. Abusing and killing people of color is morally wrong. Most of us, white folks, are on this bandwagon now and we're not backing down. Black lives matter. Bagpipes are played at every memorial for police officers. I find bagpipes really offensive to listen to because the dissonance makes me shudder and upsets my stomach. I think about it. The pipes could be used as weapons like violin bows. Maybe I should get some pepper spray and use it against bagpipers in self-defense. But I won't because that's ridiculous, just like pepper spraying violins. The violins are now going to smell like pepper spray. You owe those people money to either have their violins cleaned or replaced, along with a sincere apology for violating their rights. Next one's from Anna Alexander. What a despicable, violent totalitarian response to a gathering of those mourning a murder by the same people you allowed to invade. Disgusting. Clearly, the system is so corrupt and out of control that you can't be allowed to make important decisions anymore. Tear it down. Another one, this is from M. Burgland. Councilmember Burg and I personally stayed beyond the dispersal orders because we were told to move to the parking lot, not because we were willfully disobeying anything. So how about you clarify that detail before attempting to paint everyone as a vagrant criminal? This one's from Michael F. Councilmember Marcano, truly is an idiot. He obviously doesn't like or trust any cops. His questions were uneducated, unthoughtful, and embarrassing. I'm guessing he wasn't breastfed as a baby. This one's from Benjamin Smith. I was wondering if Colorado law addresses self-defense against police officers and intervening when they are using unreasonable and dangerous force? And the subject is questioned for the lawyer. This one says, according to the, it's from Haley. According to the Scientific American and Center for Disease Controls and Prevention, pepper spray is a type of tear gas or riot control agent. There's a link about that. Also, the police just publicly admitted to massive police violence for alleged and unproven thought crimes. Y'all realize that, right? Also, two people were allegedly hit by cars. Police just said zero. Also, they were complaining about people having umbrellas, even though it literally rained while I was there. And then when the two Nazis showed up around 1:00 PM, the PSL leaders peacefully walked them out and protected them, not the police. And last one is from Michael. Councilmember Marcano, grow up if you believe Facebook and Twitter is a way you should run your day-to-day life and also a seat on the council. You need to grow up, learn from Councilmember Gruber, or at least take a class on politics and Government 101. Educate yourself as currently or as embarrassment to the city you serve. And that is the last. We've received a few more since I began and we'll, we'll make sure we get those posted.
Thank you very much, everyone, for participating. Council, our interim chief, Vanessa Wilson, and for the viewing audience. Meeting adjourned.
Own goodies for just about everyone.
This is the local honey from the Aurora bees.
Betsy Contreras knows a thing or two about honey.
And I'm the honey maker, jam maker. This is honeycomb.
She's been making and selling her honey products at farmers markets for the last 16 years. This year, she's excited to see her customers at Southlands.
I love talking to people. I love my customers and my customers love the honey.
There's such a great variety of vendors, even under the present circumstances. We've got a bread bender. We've got all kinds of produce. We've got someone who does nuts. We've got, oh my gosh, pasta. There's so much here.
Even microgreens.
They're usually less than two weeks old. They are very nutrient-dense, anywhere from 40 to 40 times the nutrient density of the adult plants.
Of course, here at the farmer's market, it's all about being safe. So remember to bring your mask and then when you're here, watch for the arrows for which way to go.
As you can see, there's signs here. We've got hand sanitizer everywhere.
I got carrots, lettuce, onions, broccoli. Plus, I truly believe in supporting local businesses.
It's something that people look forward to. It's something they know about and something they love.
Gosh, that was fun. If you want to check it out, the Southlands Farmers Market is open on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM through September.
Well, hey, just like a farmer's market is a summertime tradition, so are those garage sales and they are back too. The state's current COVID-19 rules do allow them as long as they do not exceed 10 people at a time.
You'll want to check the city's zoning laws too, because there are rules to where and how many signs you can put up and how long your sale can run. It's always a good idea to check with your HOA as well.
All right, well, from selling your stuff to selling yourself, Lane, do you ever remember what it was like looking for that first job or any job for that matter?
Yeah, stressful comes to mind, right? It doesn't matter whether you're someone who just lost your job or maybe a recent college grad like our Jessica Chaw, but there are some ways to make it easier. Jessica's here to tell us more. What's been the hardest part?
Well, I think the thing I get most nervous about in terms of finding a job is being interviewed. But luckily, I've been able to learn some tips on how to really nail one and I'm sure these could help you too.
I spoke with Christine Mahoney, who is the career coordinator for the College of Media and Communication at CU Boulder. She tells us how getting an interview is like already being halfway across the finish line.
I think the interview sometimes clinches the job potential offer because even over Zoom, they can get a sense of who you are.
You know, maybe 50, 60, 70% of the decision has been made already by looking at your resume and looking at your resume reel and it's really, really important to seal the deal.
So some basic but helpful tips to giving a great interview starts with being yourself. You can always practice for interviews by using websites like Interview Stream, which provides opportunities to practice mock interview scenarios and to look at questions commonly asked by employers. But getting a job can really be up to your personality. Hello, everyone, it's Jessica.
Some of these attributes that are necessary in broadcast news, sometimes you have them or you don't.
So I could always practice and learn to improve my writing, but sometimes the job will just fit you or it won't. You just have to find the right place and people. Second, asking the right questions during an interview is essential. It's a given that a person should research the place they're applying to in order to know how they function and what they value. But you should also ask questions to look out for yourself. So what benefits are there as an employee? How long is my contract? Those kind of questions. what benefits are there as an employee? How long is my contract? Those kind of questions. And last but not least, you have to look the part of whatever job you're applying for, because first impressions are important. Take note of what other employees are wearing, because expectations for professional attire can be different. And it's always better to overdress than underdress. Your clothes might help you stand out. Overall, the most valuable thing I learned from Christine is that failure is okay. And a lot of the time, getting a job is up to luck and perseverance. You can't guarantee that you'll get a job, but you can always be sure you have a positive attitude.
Lots of big things happening for you as well as for our cycling community. That's because the city is getting its first-ever separated bike lanes. They're also known as protected bike lanes. They include one-way as well as two-way paths, or what's known as cycle tracks, that move in both directions but only on one side of the street. Riders can expect a safer and more convenient commute across central Aurora. The new bike lanes are along Jewel Avenue, Potomac Street, Florida Avenue, and Mexico Avenue. New bike signals are being installed at main intersections like this one at Chambers in Florida. Those should be up and running any day. Aurora TV is working with our Public Works Department to produce an in-depth informational video on the new separated bike lanes. We will let you know when and where you can see it. And speaking of seeing things, does this guy look familiar? He kind of looks like a kangaroo.
Yeah, he really does. But actually, it is a wallaby, and he may be hopping around right here in Aurora. Now, Lane, you are going to love his name. It is surprise, and it's certainly going to be one if you see him. He escaped from the Zoology Foundation in Larkspur on June 1, and then was spotted June 16 in Aurora's East Quincy Highlands neighborhood near Piccadilly Road in Quincy. If you do see him, first and foremost, do not approach him. We cannot emphasize that enough. He's a skittish fella, and he likes to run. Instead, you are asked to snap a photo and then call the Zoology Foundation at the number right here on your screen. We've also got more information under the link on this week's show.
Oh, I want a wallaby. Just kidding. It's probably a lot easier to take care of a cat, and this is the perfect time to get one. That's because June is National Adopt a Cat Month. Even though the Aurora Animal Shelter is still close to the public because of COVID, you can find your free-lan friend at their link on the city's website. But keep in mind, as we shared with you a couple of weeks ago, most of the animals at the shelter are getting adopted within 24 hours after they're made available. The best days to check the website are Thursdays and Saturdays. And while you're at the shelter's link, check out their tips on adopting a cat, like how to introduce your new cat to your home, where to put the litterbox, and how to handle inappropriate scratching.
From finding a pet to working, even enjoying a show, the internet has proven priceless during this pandemic, and Aurora's People's Building is gearing up to create a channel of socially-distanced programming.
That's right. They're working with We Are Denver to help indie artists, small nonprofits, and entrepreneurs create engaging content. They're hoping a bunch of their programming will actually be open to small audiences and streamed to larger ones as early as July. We'll be sure to keep you posted. Now, you may not be able to check out shows at the Aurora Fox right now because of COVID, but they've come up with a clever way to enjoy the arts virtually.
AuroraFoxArtCenter.org features a list of things you can watch, listen to, and even experience. Ever wonder what it's like to travel across the globe from the comfort of your couch? Well, now you can with a tour of the 75 best virtual museums from around the world. In the mood to expand your mind? Watch everything from what's known as TED Talks on diversity to an animated short on empathy. Do you need some fresh air? Go on a walk and listen to one of their suggested podcasts.
They've also linked documentaries, music playlists, and so much more. By the way, we're going to let everybody know when the Aurora Fox does reopen. We're also going to let you know when our popular Aurora On Stage series returns. I am looking forward to that.
Yeah, it's been a bit of a break because of the pandemic, but that isn't stopping us from re-airing some of our fan favorites. We leave you now with the king of rock flamenco, El Jave. Enjoy.